The district is in the packet. We're simply looking, yes, for direction as far as whether the board would like to advertise and make the appointments or whether they would like to decline like they've done in the past. I would point out that the RCD took this action, I think, on June 25th and then sent the request to the wrong address and that's why it was delayed and they sent it to this board. Would correct that address.
Any comments?
Once again, I think they should hold their own elections.
The only way I would intervene in appointing somebody is if we got to interview them and they'd have to be very biased all over the place.
All right.
There are, this is a vacancy that exists as a result of the resignation of the directors. There are also two regular sitting directors that will conclude their term on November 28th this year and consequently, and that is Director Dow and Director Batten. And consequently, Clerk of the Board, the Elections Officer, will also be asking to advertise, to take applications for those positions as well, probably in September or October, which I think is to be done. And so, but yes, at this time, according to the Public Resources Code, 9314 in particular, it's an appointment process by this board as a result of the passage of a resolution by that board requesting a veto. Interestingly, interestingly, that resolution may be rescinded, consequently making an elective process if they choose to rescind it, or if 5% of the registered voters in the district sign a petition asking for its being rescinded. And so, but it still stands for that.
So what if the board, the majority of our board refuses to make an appointment?
Where that leaves us is asphalt. The vacant seat will remain vacant until 60 days, if I understand it correct, 60 days after the period in which that seat would essentially expire. If I, if that seat, if the seat of Ramsey Wood, who has resigned, that, you know, they're making an application for appointment for today, would have expired on November 28th as well, and frankly, I don't know the answer to that question, 60 days would then lapse approximately January 25, 27, something like that. And then, by operation of law, the power to appoint would then best with the RCD. Interestingly, the same can be said for the other two seats. Power to appoint would best with the RCD after the lapse of that 60 days. Yet, there's another provision under 9314, per N.A., which says, "The expiration of the term of any director does not constitute a vacancy, and the director shall hold office until his or her successor has qualified."
And a few years back, I mean, like three, four years ago, that provision prevailed because the RCD and the board, unaware of the terms that they had and the role the board had, failed to have an election. So, pretty much, the entire board were operating under that provision where they were serving in lieu of the fact that he did not have a successor to qualify them, to succeed them. And so, we found ourselves having to make four appointments and basically, and at that point, they had come down to a point where they did not have enough or corne because of some mass resignations when the first round of disputes took place over the water. And we were then put in a position of having to reconstitute that board because at that time, we all learned about, but for many, many years, they just kind of operated on their own without any supervision or any constituted authority or election or appointment or anything.
This, this particular provision of the Public Resources Code, you know, you, I don't know about you, I won't speak for you, I'll speak for me. And I view the RCD as a special district, but it's not technically a special district. It's a resource conservation district, which has a different set of rules associated with, well, a number of things, but in this context, appointments to fill vacancies. It's different than the special districts where, if I recall correctly, you have a vacancy in a special district, not a community service district or the like, for a period of time after the vacancy, that board has the authority to fill that vacancy. And after that period of time lapses, then it falls to you as the board supervisor. So this is quite the contrary, just the opposite.
So what can we do as a board of supervisors to put it in airplay where they have to hold their elections rather than have it appointed?
To have it elected rather than appointed?
Yeah, so they have to have their election, then that's fine.
There's only two ways to make it elected. Either they rescind, that board of directors rescinds the resolution asking you to make appointments to fill their vacancies, or the second was the provision I referenced some moments ago, and that is 5% of the registered voters of the district that makes up the RCD then signs a petition, and the clerk must honor that petition, assuming they're qualified, so that there's important. Those are the two ways, and the only two ways, of causing what is now an appointed process to change to an elected process. Sir?
So if we refuse to appoint, they don't necessarily have to call for elections, they could do their own appointment.
Yes.
And that's what we ultimately did when they were, you know, they were split two and two, and we had, they had three or four applicants, and we declined to make that appointment with the good person. They ultimately, I think Bob went to the meeting and talked to him, I guess, and they ultimately appointed Ruth Dyke to fill that vacancy, and, you know, they need to kind of work on resolving their own disputes.
Okay. I'd like to call for a public comment. Is there any members? So, it's a pleasure, the board.
I'd like to push them to those elections. I'd really like to see the people that are represented by an elected official rather than an appointed.
Me too. But we can't really force them, but we can force them to make their own appointment. And the 5% of the, like you said, 5% of the-
Registered voters.
Registered voters in that, in the, just to belong to the conservation district.
That's for the RCD, I don't, I don't deserve it, but I think it's pretty large.
It's pretty large.
There's like 200 or something.
200.
Is it bigger than that?
It's big. The RCD, I think, is most valuable.
Takes, it takes in all of Susan.
I believe the city, Susan.
Does it take in Willow Creek?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Well, I think my name's on, not my name, but I think the property is on it.
Yeah, it probably is. It probably would.
It's clear up in Janesville, in the water up there.
As a member of the board, wouldn't, would you rather have an elected official or appointed?
I would rather have an elected official because then I would think it'd be less biased, you know, and you wouldn't need an operating board there. And there's too much, I don't know, distrust, I guess is the best thing I could say.
She makes an excellent point, and the excellent point is that it appears that a number of the current-serving directors of the RCD are also water users, if not all of them. And so consequently, the argument can, I think, be fairly made that, I mean, obviously, they're acting out of self-interest. But, at the same time, the Public Resources Code promotes that. It promotes that persons that serve in an RCD also be persons that are educated and are interested in the subject on which they serve, the board. So, again, the Public Resources Code seems to turn on its ear that which we at least think, you know, special districts operate.
Well, the thing is, is that we don't go to the board, we're charged a fee.
Right.
All right, for the, what do you call it, the master.
Our master service.
Or it was Bucel, comes to mind to me, I don't know who it is now.
He's the water master for the state of California through the Department of Water Resources.
Okay, and I remember one time, they came up there and they, there was a terrible drought for years, but anyway, we were in a seven-year drought, and they literally took all the water within three hours and took that dam that we had down to the creek bit.
That's another agenda item.
I'm just simply saying, that's the authority that they had, but I, and everyone would look at it as basically an elected thing because we're not there in personalities, you know, type thing, we're as a voter.
So, again, the point is, is that the electorate has the ability to make this an elected situation if the ground swell of interest was sufficient.
But I, but I think the thing that gets lost in all the discussion is we have to keep in mind, and that is that to have an election costs money, elections are not cheap, and we're talking about into the tens of thousands of dollars, and that has to be borne by the district. And the district, basically, up until we got into the water business, had actually really very little of any revenue that was independent of a grant that they would be administering in their purposes to try to improve landscape and bring about improvements. And so, the argument is why that provision said the code is providing for a bypass to have an election is to mitigate the cost, and that means that we have an environment where there are not a lot of disputes and everybody's kind of working together. When the water master service apps drafted onto them, that's when this whole thing kind of went off the deep end. And, you know, I think what we need to look at doing is how we can come up with a mechanism to remove the responsibility for the water master service in dealing with the courts on that decree and administer a separate fund without the RCD going back to being what it really was, an RCD. And I think in that respect, the conflicts would dissipate and we can maybe go back to, you know, business being conducted, we're in an appointment process. But in the meantime, if we're going to go the election process, which I think, given the nature of the conflicts that we have there, is probably the only really true just way to do it, you're going to have to somehow come up with how you pay for those costs. The reality is, the voters are all the voters, and they aren't necessarily the people who are using the service.
Right.
It's fine to have like 10,000 people vote on it that aren't paying the bill, and then you've got 200 people or 500 people, maybe even 1,000 people that might benefit directly from the services being rendered by the RCD. And they're the ones that are basically being expected to come up with the cost and to have the privilege of their neighbors voting on how they're going to settle their disputes. I mean, that's the disconnect.
For point of reference, there are approximately 22 under boards or commissions in this county, or at least partly in this county, that I was told by the Elections Officer recently are appointed-type boards that this board bills.
Well, they can have elections, but because of either the lack of interest or the lack of resources, they're, they're in an appointed mode where by the board rather than being elected directly.
So the point is, is the RCD's not the one.
Their reasoning, their reasoning is, is the expense. That's the reasoning.
That's the main expense.
Yeah.
I mean, it would cost them $20,000 or $30,000, and the question is, who pays for that?
Step back and look at it, how many losses have they been in?
Well, that's the, that's the reality is that-
I mean, and it all goes back to what Jim said, it all goes back to-
It's water master.
Since I've been on the board, when that first election, that's what I was saying, you guys have got to get rid of this water mess.
Absolutely.
It's killing.
But as far as the cost of the election, I mean, if you don't, yes, you have a special election, but they could have made their election in conjunction with a normal election cycle.
If they wanted to pursue it by way of election.
In which case, the cost would have been negligible. It would be basically the cost of the ink.
Yeah, due to the, due to the bad address, we missed the, might know the law change.
But we've been talking about-
Not that we were requested.
The whole idea of the, of them, of the elect, that they're having all elections and throwing around for two years.
Yeah.
So if they could have got their ducks in a row and been ready to have an elected board for very little money. So, the fact is, they sit and do nothing but argue.
Well, they don't want to have them elected.
Yeah.
They don't want it elected, apparently, by an action. Yes, clearly they don't.
My recommendation would be to send them a letter declining the invitation to appoint and highly suggest that they get their ducks in a row and send, and send a letter to all their users and notify them of the provisions to get it on, how they go about, do their elections, because they probably don't know.
Of course.
Probably the youth, the people, the members don't know either.
If that's the desire of the board, more than happy to accommodate, of course, any such request isn't binding on them.
Right.
They don't have to, but it's-
They haven't followed any of the requests about the board training, except for one board member, Jesse Claypool did, but they seem to make chaos and then every two, three times a year, they come here for us to try to fix it.
Speaking of that training, Laffco is going to sponsor another training session in, probably sometime in October, so it'd be nice to encourage those four. But if we decline to make the appointment, they have the power and capacity to make the appointment in the absence of the board taking action. And that's how they appointed Ruth, that's what they should do with.
So, if that's the pleasure of the board, then I'm more than happy to communicate to them that you declined to accept their invitation, sent your regrets, and that, is it the pleasure of the board that we would suggest to them that they conduct elections for the purpose?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my pleasure, yeah.
And, and also, you know, it'd be worth saying, you know, that it's unfortunate that they didn't plan, because they could have had elections done now in November for very little money, you know, really. Could have solved their own problems here, but by January, the problem would be solved, it'd be of electing their own people, but they do not.
I think that I would likely include in there an invitation to attend and participate in the next training that's being sponsored by Laffco through Best Best Greer in October.
Yes.
We're good?
Yes, Ayana McCain here. There are a couple issues that are really important here, and that is, they might sit on this board and not do anything, but remember, by doing nothing is a decision that leave it as it is. I mean, so it might be wise to have them make some, a decision, outright make a decision, because to leave it as it is, is a decision.
We can't make them do it.
I know, but however, we can suggest, you know, type thing, that we understand this is the way it works. Also, I don't want to divulge names here, but I do know that we've been working with certain people regarding property out on, is it Capazuno? Is that what it's called, Capazuno?
Capazuno.
Yeah, out there in that area. And there's a big issue of property that is, needs to be irrigated and pipes put in the ground and that sort of thing for water, and they can't do it, you know, type thing. And so, the water issue is just not, you know, they're trying to do something, then they can't do it because of a property dispute that's going on, and it might be a lawsuit. So I'm just simply saying that it's all water-related, when it really gets down to it, when they start putting the pipes in the ground.
Well, the other thing, Bob, if I'm not mistaken, is that the general public has their own out because 5% of the voters signed a request to the clerk that they can force the election, 5% of the voters within.
Yes, 9314 of the Public Resources Code, provision B2.
And that's something that needs to get out to the general public in some form. I don't know how we would do that, but through the radio, the newspaper, have that printed, that's an option for the people of the RCD board to-
Well, I guess what I would say is, is there are a number of advocates that have presented themselves before this board that would, I don't know if they're aware of it, I think they're generally aware of the law related to this stuff otherwise, that have been correct on a number of points. And so, I'd be happy to break for their attention, but they do with it, of course, is up to them.
Correct.
Yes.
But there are options.
Yes, there are, sir.
Yes. I mean, again, I don't think the RCD board has done anything to combat the election thing. I think they'd rather be, you know, appointed and call the shots rather than let all the voters vote out, call the shots. I think so, it's been by design that has, they just wanted to pursue the election, because if they would have found it, possibly they could have had an election on that November for very little money.
I'll draft a letter and send it to the proper.
Can you CC a copy of that to the board?
Absolutely.
All right. Oh, Bob. Mr. Pyle. Your presence is requested.
We appointed you to the board.
Yeah.
All righty, we'll take up item H1. This is, Mr. Pyle's on the groundwater.
Picking up water.
Yep.
Surface water is a big enough issue now with picking the groundwater. Adding to the issue, but currently, right now, because of the drought, the state legislature is taking action, they have bills, family bill 1739 to give the power, which is actually a Senate bill, 1168, they won't forgive the state of California regulations over how they would expect groundwater to be governed by the state through public agencies. So, basically, that's how I read it, and I know Bob and Richard and Lori have all of that, so we'll get everybody. I just want to get a good discussion going on, if the states think that they've taken over the control of groundwater, what we need to be dealing with, what direction we need to be headed. But these, when I talked to Brian Zoller the other day, and he thought the Senate bill is the one that's probably going to move ahead, not the Assembly bill, and there's not a lot of difference between them, but they are not something to give. Words headed, how I see it, the state of California, it's still passed, it's not been passed yet, it's been amended many times. The state said it's setting up groundwater regulations, it gives them authority to manage groundwater, but they're also saying, we want you to do every basin separate by your local people. Because every, you can't have a one-size-fits-all of groundwater law in California, where every groundwater basin is different. You know, Turras, Cedarville, Indian Valley, Sierra Valley, Honey Lake Valley, San Juan Key Valley, Sacramento Valley, every groundwater basin is different. So, what they're asking for is local control over your groundwater basin. And you do it by their rules, how they tell you to do it, or they will come do it themselves. That's how I understand it. Now, back in 1989, right now, if I understand it too, and this may not be exactly true, if there's already a groundwater district in place, they probably will not leave you alone. They probably will leave you alone, but that is probably substantial to fulfill the law. But there is Sierra Valley and Long Valley groundwater basin right now.
Yes.
Which we, actually, I sit on that board now.
No, I don't.
There's two supervises in North County and two from Sierra County, and a couple public members, but that is law right now, that probably right here. And also, which is law, is Senate Bill 1721, which myself, Barry McAllister, Alvin Lincolnstaff, and Randy Jerkberg, we were appointed by the board supervisors to be the water advisory committee and help put this together. At that time, Senator Doolittle carried this bill, and this is actually a current law passed by state legislation, which is, which is the Honey Lake Groundwater Management Act to implement the Honey Lake Valley groundwater management basin. That law is in place as we speak. Basically, what it says, the board supervisor will appoint a board, which will be start the, the district moving, and then elections will follow. That has never been implemented, and the time, the reason we did that back then was a very realistic theory that the state of Nevada, basically Reno's dead area, was going to take the groundwater from Honey Lake Valley. That, that's what brought that on. It's bringing it on today with the severe drought in California and no water.
It's still.
Everybody's getting scared, and the state is under the, the drought declaration, has already taken control of all groundwater that flows toward the ocean, basically, I mean, where there were anything. You know, any diversion, that's saying you can no longer divert during this emergency, and the governor has this power through this state of emergency, which only is through the drought. Anyhow, there is a lot of overdraft in the groundwater in Sacramento Valley, the Davis area, there's a lot of water overdrawn in San Juan Valley, been going on for years. The level, the ground level is actually, the floor, the basin is actually sinking. So there are areas in California where there is an overdraft, so anyhow, that's kind of what brought all this on. So I think in our discussion, we got determined, do we want to try to work with current legislation, whatever the state of California passes, and we want to use our own groundwater management district, which was passed September 15th, 1989? Would we do nothing, or whatever? And then maybe we already, we do have a groundwater management-
Plan.
Plan, we do have a groundwater management plan in place, we've been doing, which is basically just a ground, a plan of managing groundwater and recording, monitoring the level in certain wells, but that is not at all what the-
State's looking for.
What this bill California has is a big deal. I mean, it's very detailed, there will be a district forum, there will be fees, we'll have employees, we have to collect money to pay these employees and to do the work in the district.
Boy, we get another RCD, huh?
Yeah. What was greater, what's greater powers?
Well, firstly, I want to say, it's my idea, if this goes that far, it will not be anything like the RCD or the LIC, I think this will be a whole, I mean, we have, you know, 40, 50 pages, whatever the ticket's of, of law, state law, which just will be done by.
Well, let me ask this question, you know, in terms of reviewing the stuff over the weekend, and given, I had a council meeting the other night, the city, which has its own, has the springs that feed it that have been maintaining consistency even during the dry weather, drought, and they do realize several months of the year, we have some groundwater pumping on the east end of town to augment the springs, and they haven't noticed significantly, there's been some minor fluctuations with the wells that they're pumping with. So at this point in time, the city does not have, you know, an immediate threat to their water supply, and yet, the governor's declaration a couple, two, three weeks ago, they, and they're mandated to have like stage two and stage three, you know, drought restrictions. I mean, if there was a water tank burst, or there was contamination, or whatever it may be, that caused them not to be able to use or provide the water they have, there's protocols in place as to how you handle those kind of emergencies. It was, about two million years ago, they had a pipe that wasn't, that had ruptured or something, and it caused the system, and they had to worry through the media, everybody in town to stop watering their lawns and use water sparingly, because in the meantime, there was a fire on the edge of town, and the fire agencies had all jumped on it, did their job, and then they had to refill their tanks, and not being knowledgeable of the restrictions, they were actually in town filling up the pumper trucks and the tankers, and they got, you know, it cut, you know, public works and, and the fire agencies were at each other for using the water. But anyway, they have protocols in how they do that, and even though we don't experience any of it right now, the governor's imposed restrictions are 15, 25% reduction. So even though we have the water, you know, the city is grappling, but how do we convince the people to reduce the use of water? And how, how do you implement that, and what effect does that have on their operating budgets and revenues? And the question came up, that's inside of the city, now you have all the rest of the county around the city, how does, you know, they, they don't control that, we can play that, which we really don't as a board, because we're not water providers, it's all helter-skelter. And the question comes down to, with an entity like this one that's being proposed, or an entity that was adopted back in 1989, does this give those entities the power to require metering, put on meters on the wells? And if so, even though the water may be there on the east slope, but it's not on the west slope, and they have restrictions put into place, blanket rather than, you know, a case-by-case determination, you know, does that mean that they have to reduce their pumping by, you know, 15%, 25%, whatever becomes in the decree that comes out of Sacramento? And then, of course, if you have the metering, you know, there's going to be fees attached to that for the use of what you do use, and there will be additional fees attached for what you don't use, but yet, you're still responsible for. I mean, it becomes a layered nightmare for the consumer.
It's, it's a lot to do, and the only good part of it, I can say, is instead of a state law, one-size-fits-all, they have realized that won't work, and it has to be based on a basis, so whatever Honey Lake-
Right now, the Department of Water Resources is dictating to-
That it's current?
To the municipalities, basically, a one-size-fits-all standard. It's not case-by-case.